Thank you. I.
Lord, your Lord, your to the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's August 3rd. It is 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners here and we're 30 days to the backyard ball. So with that, we'll start with the consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have one request for a replacement ticket for $381.64. Thirty-four exoneration for $30,029.29 minutes for July 29th, 2022. Vouchers: General County Fund 198, 10258, 911, 9,163. Chestnut Ridge Park $990. Camp Muffley $5,078.93. Mason Dixon Park $1,005.0876. Mon County Center $864.75. Reallocated coal $27,410. Assesses valuation $50.84. Mon County ARPA account $48,008. Purchasing card vouchers: General County Fund $23,943.31. Magistrate Court $30.86, 911, 425.28. Chestnut Ridge Park $76.48. Camp Muffley $245.81. Mason Dixon Park $238.69. Mon County Center $87.34. Assesses valuation $95.45 for a voucher total of $316,319.08. We have budget revisions that require state approval for the general fund. Four accounts: jail reimbursable $702, motor pool $717, and dams and dredging of $712. In-house budget revisions for the county clerk and county clerk elections.
Just one correction. Dams and dredging is the count 720, right?
Yes.
Okay, he said 712.
Oh, I'm sorry, 720. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for August 3rd, 2022.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We also have a fourth, or I'm sorry, second quarter status report for fiduciary commissioner George Armstead.
Okay. We'll accept it as is. Okay, there are no separate fiduciaries.
We have to approve that.
Oh, we have to approve.
Move to approve the fiduciary.
Sorry.
Report as presented.
Sorry.
It's Bob moving second to approve the report as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
It passes. Okay, no fiduciary orders. Separate.
Nothing, no.
Thank you. Okay. Introduction to new employees: Sheriff Curry Palmer. And Mr. Colton Sims.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
I'm introducing Colton Sims as a part-time process, I'm sorry, court security officer that will be starting August 4th at a starting salary of $15 per hour at an at-will position.
Move to approve position as presented.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to see the court house.
Mr. Smith.
Morning commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning I'd like to introduce, she's not here with us, she's actually worked, Chelsea Bowinkle. She had a start date of Monday, August 1st at 1918 per hour.
Move to approve the position as presented.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one for Casa for Kids.
Mm-hmm. Nyra Miller has been interviewed by the director. She is going to be a part-time outreach and engagement specialist for Casa for Kids. Let's see here. Start date, August 4th, 2022. Part-time at 1683 per hour.
Move to approve position as presented.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
Do we have any others?
I got one more.
Okay.
Actually, I got two more.
Oh, okay.
All right. We've got one for Chestnut Ridge Park. Sydney de Bastiani Taylor, part-time seasonal without benefits. Start date is August 3rd. Pay rate is $11.50 per hour.
Move to approve.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and?
And one more for Youth Services Center. Richard Sewell, S-O-W-E-L-L, part-time relief worker. Start date is August 10th, 2022, $14.40 per hour.
Move to approve.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any more?
No, that's all.
Okay. Seeing none? Move to comments from the public. If there's any individual who'd like to come before us and talk to us, we'd like to hear you. And again, a row in crowd that there is no one, so we will cancel that because we are excited to offer to the public, and it'll be on TV, a presentation from the Mount near Aero Robotics Team. So however someone wants to come to the mic, or however you want to do it, we are under your guise.
All right.
You just state your name, so that way people will know you and you'll have.
Yeah, I have a presentation, like Google slides. Would we be able to project it up there, do you think, or?
Sure. Yes, it's gonna take us a couple of minutes to get it together.
Yeah.
Okay.
While we're doing that, did you want to each state your names for the record, so that way when you're watching YouTube 50 years from now, you can say you were here and talk about why you're wearing a mask?
Yes, I can say it too.
Matthew Stanton.
I'm Matthias Romero. I'm a rising senior in MHS.
I'm Pratham Banishali. I'm a rising junior at MHS.
I'm a rising eighth grader at Mount near Middle School.
Do you know Ms. Shelley Garlets? At Mount near Middle. She's a sixth grade teacher.
I, oh yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you got a great new principal.
Yep.
You will really like your new principal.
My name is Colin Street. I'll be a rising senior at Morgantown High School.
Okay, great.
Colin, are you also in the band?
Yeah, I'm the drum. I think Gwen is, yeah.
Fellow drum mate with.
Well.
Couldn't recognize you behind the mask, but.
I was WV marching band starting 9071 to 76, and I run the percussion section, the alumni band, so.
Really?
If you say percussion, you're in right away. You're a good aunt for sure.
That's good to hear.
And Colin and Gwen used to go to grade school together, so I haven't really talked to him since he was about this tall.
Really? I didn't know that.
You didn't go to St. Francis?
Um, I didn't go to St. Francis. I went to Mon Kids.
Okay.
Mon Kids.
Mon Kids, that's where it was. I knew it was at, I knew it was at daycare somewhere. I thought it was early or pre-K or something. Okay.
You coached my sister Emily's.
Oh, okay. Natural mom back though, okay. Do you play basketball?
Um, no.
And Emily swims, that tells you what kind of a basketball coach I am.
No, there's band and there's band members, but then there's percussionists.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Who are you talking about?
Are you a swimmer like your sister?
I used to be.
Huh?
I used to be.
Used to be? Well, that's good, though. You learn, you know how to swim. You're better off than me.
I'm proud to say that my claim to fame, of all the things I've ever done in 1970s, the year they introduced the funny drums, the big drums, and Rusty Davis and I wrote the Boogie Kids, where it goes, and you come out going.
Really?
Yeah. That's my claim to fame. Nothing else. I mean, I could cure cancer. He goes, you wrote the Boogie Kids? And that was the Boogie Kids. And now it's amazing how great the high school bands and the percussion sections are. I mean, you're so far advanced.
They have, we practice a lot. They have us there for week to week during the summer.
Yes. There's a pride. There's something about, yeah. You're only as good as your weakest link and, and now you'll be a senior. Oh, yeah. I'm a big band geek, so.
Well, this is actually, I think this year will be the 100th year of the Morgantown High School Band.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we're going to Disney for it, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
No, well, you're a good band, yeah.
I'm in the Mount near Middle School Band.
Who's the band? They changed band direction.
Um, no, Mr. Schaefer is still the.
That's right.
Yeah. And today we actually have a PNC performance for Pirates.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Are you doing the.
National Anthem.
National Anthem?
No way.
Very cool. Are they combining? Because the last time they did that, it was too.
Westwood is.
You and Westwood, okay.
Oh, so you're going to the game, too. Well, be perfect weather.
Yep.
Because I think.
And you play, yeah.
They're gonna help break the losing streak.
Yeah.
Broke it last night. They lost seven in a row.
Yeah. Who, they play Milwaukee, I think?
Yep.
So at least it's a good team. Well, at least see one good team.
Yeah.
No, sorry. With all of our technology, we just weren't prepared for presentation. And this is fairly new. We haven't.
We just got this, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
We just set this up and we're putting the pressure on.
Not me.
Yeah.
This is kind of a good example of what happens with the students when they're at a competition.
Yeah.
And the robot stops communicating, you know, at the drive station, and you see like the programmers like frantically trying to figure it out. Yeah.
Are you, are you a parent advisor, or?
Yes, yes.
You want to come and talk about your group?
Yeah, talk a little bit. Go ahead.
Well, sure. So I'm Melissa Gegenbach. I am, hello, hello. Jeff and I went to law school together. So I moonlight as a lawyer, but really I'm a mentor.
Lawyer's wife.
I'm a mentor for the Outreach and Public Relations Team on Mars. And really, we kind of push the kids out there and they do their own presentations. I try to stay quiet, but you know, I'm a lawyer, so gotta talk sometimes, right? So they really, they really are great. I've been doing it since my older son, who's now 20, was a freshman in high school, so.
Wow.
Yeah, so my oldest is now a senior, so it's, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. So the kids will talk to you a little bit about like our, our outreach events and then our really exciting opportunity that's coming up this weekend. So we're hoping to invite you guys and any members of the public who are watching to come to our robotics competition this weekend. I will turn this over to the students.
Okay, great.
You want to put it in presentation mode?
Move a slide down here, Sean.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll come. Do you mind if we come down? Oh, well, we're gonna.
Yeah.
All right, so here, let's stand up. So like we said, we are from Mount near Aero Robotics. We're a local nonprofit and robotics team here in north central West Virginia, but we're based out of Montegalia County. Like I said, my name is Colin Street. I'm our team's president, and I'm a member of our Outreach and Public Relations Team.
My name is Pratham Banishali. I'm part of the programming team. I'm the programming lead for this coming year.
I'm Matthias Romero, and I'm a part of the Outreach and Public Relations Sub Team.
I'm Matthew Stanton. I am a part of the mechanical sub team, and I used to be on the FOL team 5G.
So first is the overarching organization that we're a part of. And their mission is to spread STEM values through putting students in hands-on competition scenarios and letting them use their problem-solving skills and learn real-life skills that they can use in the future. And not only do they strive to spread STEM, but also to do it in a way that empowers students to become future innovators and leaders. And do this through what they call their core values, which are co-operation and gracious professionalism, which essentially emphasize a culture of competition, but also with collaboration. You collaborate with your competitors so everyone can put forward their best on the field. And so while Mars is part of the FIRST Robotics Competition, FIRST also has a few other levels of competition, like FL Explore, which is the elementary school, FL Challenge, which is for middle school, and then FIRST Tech Challenge, which is kind of in the middle. And we're one of 3,800 teams in over 34 countries around the world, but only one of three in West Virginia.
We are an FRC team that's based out of Montegalia County, but we also have students across four counties in West Virginia, those being Montegalia, Marion, Preston, and Taylor. We have 37 students total. But Mars is more than just robots. We like to teach more than just technical skills to students that are in Mars, and we focus a lot on our outreach. So for example, a few years back, we won the Chairman's Award, which is the most prestigious award you can win in FIRST Robotics, which puts us in as one of the 30 teams in the FIRST Hall of Fame. We mostly, we won that award mostly by working to expand STEM education and opportunities into rural and underserved areas of West Virginia. And we also teach students skills so that they can invest them into their communities when they grow out of the program. So for example, we like to teach non-technical skills by teaching things like graphic design. We teach event organization. We teach grant writing. And we also teach technical skills such as computer-aided design, how to use machinery, and how to wire robots. We also have a 100% post-secondary education rate compared to the only 26.4 average of West Virginia.
That's really impressive.
Yes.
That is extremely impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building off what Matthias said, you can see in this picture, our 2020 robot, Marvin 13. We spent six grueling weeks of 24 hours a week practicing, building, designing, programming this robot. But after its season was up, it's now our primary outreach robot. So in this picture, you can see we were at the new Preston County Youth Center. I don't know if you've heard of that. But we were at the summer camp, and they were playing dodgeball with those robots. So these robots have a competition element, and they also go and go back and help with the community.
Is Marvin 13 the 13th iteration?
Yes.
So, and that spans how many years? You do a different one every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Our most recent season was 15. It was our 15th year anniversary, so we had Marvin 15, who was one of our most successful robots, winning four awards based on his performance on the field and winning two awards for sophistication of its design and the sophistication of its programming. So it was one of our most successful robots we've had. So to make sure our impact on our community is felt, we've adopted our hybrid model of outreach, which is combining elements of our strategies of outreach we did during or before the pandemic with the ones we did during the pandemic to expand the accessibility of our outreach. So one way we really did this was with our STEM crafts. So you can see in this picture, our light cycle STEM crafts. These are basic small technical activities. And Matthew has another one of our STEM crafts named Brushbots.
Thank you.
These are basic small technical activities that are meant to teach students technical skill in a fun way. So the one you have is Brushbots, and we'll pass out a QR code to a video we made, and it teaches you how to do it, and it runs you through the technical skill behind it. But we send these to schools. We do them at STEM fairs. And it's basically just a small little way to teach students like how a circuit works or how a motor works.
Wow.
So in 2020, we applied to your guys' grant for $3,000 to pilot these light cycles. And it ended up being so successful, it was our first kind of breakthrough into kind of hybrid outreach. So we sent about 100 of these to Suncrest Elementary School. We met with their teachers online, running them through the craft, and we sent them a video we made that was our students going step by step through the craft, so the teachers were able to run the outreach event on their own. That way we could minimize the risk of COVID exposure, and we're able to continue spreading STEM education throughout north central West Virginia. So we've used this technique beyond the pandemic. We went to Knoxville, Tennessee for one of our competitions in early April. And we, like, some people were asked to go to a STEM fair in Brewston Mills. Since we couldn't be there in person, we sent them 100 of our STEM crafts in the video, and they were able to just set up a booth and do the STEM crafts there while we were in Knoxville competing. So next, our FIRST Lego League. So this spans both the FIRST Lego League Explore program, which is for elementary school students, and FIRST Lego League Challenge, which you see in this picture with this robot right here, kind of made out of Legos, but it still kind of underscores the engineering and building processes of FIRST Robotics Competition, which is what we do. Our grant that we applied to you guys in 2021 helped fund five new teams in the state, which was very crucial because almost the entire program died during the pandemic. So by funding these five new teams, Matthew here was actually on one of those teams, and he can talk to you about some of the successes they had.
Um, yes. So I was part of Team 5G, one of their Redbox teams that they created after pandemic. And it was actually our rookie year, and we made it all the way to state and was third or fourth, I believe, out of 30, which is a really big accomplishment. We won Engineering Excellence Award and I think teamwork.
I believe it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was really cool as well.
So by being able to directly fund these teams, it allows more students to have the experiences and gain the knowledge that FIRST and these FIRST programs have to offer. Moving on to our FRC Help Desk. So as one of 30 out of the 3,800 teams in the world in the FIRST Hall of Fame, we like to really work on giving back to other teams that might not be as privileged as us. So what we do is we have our tougher teams' help desk, where we bring extra parts to all the competitions we go to. And these competitions span as far as Houston, Texas, which is where the world's competition is. This year, we traveled to Albany, New York, California University, and close to Pittsburgh, and Knoxville, Tennessee. And for each of those competitions, we took like just a bin of random metal, wood, just materials that other teams may need. So at these competitions, they could come to our booth, ask if they needed any specific part, or if they just needed an extra set of hands, because we're fortunate enough to take off roughly 40 of our students to every competition. That way, if they need that, we're there for them. And that puts our students in a direct leadership and teaching kind of opportunity that they might not get in a normal practice or a normal setting. So that's kind of a general overview of our organization. If you have any questions, we'd love to answer them, but thank you.
No, very cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, your, your shirt, your Mars 2614. What's the 2614?
Oh, so that's our team number. Every team has a team number. We're not exactly the 2,614th team. That's just the number we work.
Okay, very cool. Because your, your logo and everything is recognizable everywhere.
Yes.
I was in Charleston, and I saw someone walking down the street with a Mars T-shirt on. And take, went to Jackson Mills a couple of weeks ago, and obviously there was people walking around in their Mars T-shirts when you guys were in band camp. So it's everywhere you go, it kind of catches your eyes, and you think about, wow, those are people that have in some ways been touched by your organization, so. And even as you're just introducing yourselves, you're introducing yourselves in, in team roles, like, you know, you're in charge of program, you're in charge of, you're in charge of the mechanical aspect. And kind of taking a holistic project management, you know, approach to what you guys do. So in addition to just, you're just not going out and tinkering with, you know, robots and say they're this. You're learning, you're learning how to interact and how to, you know, run successful projects. So it's just really cool. The 100% graduate, or post-secondary, post-secondary rate is very, very impressive. I mean, you can't do any better than that.
Yeah. Going back to our number, we've actually given our number some significance. Normal competitions, like I said, when we went to all of those places across the country, span three days. We hold our own off-season event here in Morgantown at the Rec Center called WV Rocks or Robotics Extreme, where we hold an event in just 26 hours and 14 minutes straight instead of over three days. So that'll actually be happening this Friday and Saturday, and it's welcome to the, it's completely open to the public. So if you guys were interested in attending at any point on Friday or Saturday at the Rec Center, we'd love to have you. We could give you an exclusive tour around. But that's kind of, we've given our number some significance in that way.
That's right. My always, always make numbers apply to something, so.
I was so nervous you gave me this. I was afraid if I would be able to figure out how to open it. That's how nervous I was on this. But, and I'll say this, and I'm sure, I'm sure on behalf of all three of us, and we don't normally say this, but if there are something, and I know you, when you're looking for funding and you're going to some sort of event, you represent the best of the best of Mon County. So we are very open-minded if you were coming, if there's a problem or a need. So I want to throw that out now. We don't usually say that, and I'm looking for Netta staring at me, but you've never asked for a lot. But every time you've done, you've come back, and we're very proud and honored who you are, and you represent us extremely well.
Thank you.
And what you do, you take a little bit, and you get, you accomplish so much with that, so thank you for all you do. Thank you to all your advisors, and thank you for the parents.
And the parents who are, I know, doing this. And again, and just for your information, and you will have, we have this as videotape, and it's put on YouTube, so you can have that and use this in any way you want.
Oh, okay.
So feel free.
Yeah, it may have been a little clunky with us, the way the setup, but it's out there forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did, parents, did you, do you want a picture of the kids with the commissioners?
Yeah, that would be.
Come on up.
Yeah, sure.
Kids, come on up here. It's up to you.
I didn't know.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah.
Their, their social media presence is strong, so this will be good.
And you'll see, see, you're working computers. I have Voodoo Dolls. That gives you an idea where.
Tom, you want to get in the middle or?
Put them in between us.
Oh, okay. There he has that.
They're perfect.
All right.
Excellent. All right. Great. Thank you guys.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see, I care.
That's, yeah.
Melissa, do you have the business cards with the QR code?
I forgot them.
Okay.
Shall we take?
If you guys go to our YouTube, it's just Mars 2614 on YouTube. It'll have the video for those brushbots.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And when is your competition again?
It is August 5th through 6th at the Rec Center. So I think we start at 7:30 in the morning. We go all the way to 2:30 on Saturday.
I think the competition itself begins at noon.
Oh.
And it runs 26 hours and 14 minutes. We have 24 teams coming. Teams from, there's a team from China coming. They're, they're coming all over the United States.
Yeah.
It's highly sought after to be able to come to this competition.
Yeah, our, our signups filled within like 15 minutes this year. Yeah, and we had teams constantly emailing us, hey, is there a spot open? Hey, is there a spot open? Because we're, we're the only one of these events in the world that lasts straight instead of over three days.
Very cool.
Good luck.
And you're still over.
Thank you very much.
Up by Mount near Middle and that, that other building over there.
Yeah, we've got a building up by Mount near Middle, and then our primary workspace is out of White Hall, just up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's good. But thank you. Again, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And 10 hours later, I will be able to put this together. That's great. Okay. Grants. We have no grants today. Great. Correspondence requests received from Stewartstown Community Council regarding funding assistance from the Community Center Expenditure Account.
Did you all get a chance to take a look at it?
I honestly haven't.
They're asking for $6,319. For two window air conditioning units and insulation brackets and new kitchen countertops. I would recommend we just move this to a work session and we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's it. Any other correspondence?
I just had one item that came in while we were away. This is from Jan Zerzak. He is a activities coordinator for Genesis Youth Crisis Center. And they had an event from July 25, July 25th to July 29th at Camp Muffley, and it's just a letter of thanks for all of the stuff that JR and his staff did while they were there. They had a wonderful time. He complimented the pool and all of the, the lifeguards and all of the staff and how, how nice the grounds and everything were. So just wanted to pass that along to you.
Thank you.
That's the only thing I have.
Okay.
Do you all have anything?
No, but the, the thing that was particularly interesting about that letter, he complimented the professionalism of the, of the lifeguards.
Yes.
And how attention to detail, and how, you know, it's hard, you've got kids, teenagers, that are performing those jobs, and to get them to focus, and he just, it was amazed. I guess it stood out. So it was very cool for him to take the time to write a letter.
Okay, thank you. I know we have no unfinished business. New business?
I just had one thing that came in yesterday, and this is kind of out of the ordinary that we would do it this way, but it's from Joe Claus. He is a, he's the Threat Preparedness Chief of Operations at the Health Department. And he's asking if they can hold a COVID vaccine clinic on Monday evening when the fair parade is going on out on the Courthouse Square. Typically, our process is they fill out an application, but since it is Monday, this would be your only time to take that up. I've asked Colleen to go ahead and forward him the application, so he can at least fill it out, and we would still have backup paperwork on it. But I didn't know if you guys would consider going ahead and approving that.
I have no problem.
I'd move that we approve the, the, pre-approve the request.
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The more we have those events, even we get half a dozen people, it's, it's worth it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, new business. Reports from elect. Okay, new business. Reports from elected officials. Nope. Okay, he's shaking. Said, I know you're, we're having the work session, so. Okay, reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just a couple of things, just like the bench, the Mars team that left. I mean, those, those kids are impressive. I got a feeling we're all going to be working for them one day, probably sooner than later. And another little note out to our Parks Director. He has doubled or tripled his duties and now is a certified lifeguard as well. And my understanding is that he actually saved a kid in, in our Muffley pool within the last week and a half. So that, it just continues to amaze me, the work that our employees do and what they're doing for the county. So we thank you, JR, for that, and that's all I've got.
Since the last meeting, which we met on Friday, it's, it seems like it was last Wednesday, but it was only last Friday that we met. So I've been at the County Commission Association of West Virginia meetings from Sunday through yesterday. Today's a regular day. It started with the call for Green County, which I was able to, wasn't only able to participate in a couple of minutes on. Tomorrow, we have a special Juma meeting to discuss the, the possibility of bidding on a major event at the Aquatic Center. And then we have a sync-up with our broadband team regarding Phase Two. And in the evening, there's that demo out at the diving well. Again, they're going to be doing that. So if I have a chance, I'll stop out. Friday, staff reports. Saturday, actually, I have breakfast on Saturday, and then staff reports. And then Friday, I have breakfast and staff reports. Saturday, I have a breakfast. And then there's another, another event in the afternoon out at Mylan Park. Monday is the fair parade and kickoff. I'm glad to hear that, I guess it's finally moving forward, because there's a lot of.
Yes.
Apprehension as to whether they're going to be able to have it or not due to the lack of ability of the city to provide police resources. So I'm glad to hear that we're, we're going to have it. In general, I, I think the, the training, and again, this is annual training, that our summer meetings, the Auditor's Office uses that as to provide the training that they're required to provide to commissioners via statute. So there was a purpose for that. But it also, we had a lot, a lot of discussion about Amendment 2. And it was some very helpful, some not. I think you, we have situations like this. You get people on both sides, and just like we were having a conversation last week with the assessor, if we sit down and talk about each side and try to understand where each side's coming from, it makes it a lot easier. There were some commissioners that were only set on lobbing insults to Senator Tar when he came to talk to us and explain. And to give Senator Tar credit, he came and stood there for 90 minutes and took a lot of questions, some that verged on hostility, and then he even stayed and ate dinner with the group. So that's the type of input you want from both sides. It doesn't, it doesn't help to, you know, impugn the intentions of your, of the person that you're, you're having the conversation with. So I just wish that it was more like that, because honestly, there was county commissioners that didn't have their numbers straight. And even after they were told they didn't have their numbers straight, would still ask the same questions the very next day. You know, and again, it's, that's not helpful to the overall process. And I do want to personally thank, I thanked Senator Tar for coming. He did admit that there were some things that they needed to adjust that they hadn't thought of. And in some instances, you know, some of those things are considering how many people have touched the paper, you know. But it was a hurried product. He admitted that that, that publication they put out was something that they were working on, and his staff was supposed to have ready by January, and then the special session pushed the production up so that there were things that they still had to work on. But for the most part, he seemed to be very genuine and, and did know his information. So, you know, I, I give him credit for that. Also ran into Zach Abraham, who's going to be, his company's going to be leading our HR audit. Very exciting to get that started, too. So that's it.
Okay, great. Um, let's see. Couple of things. Yesterday, I attended an all-day meeting. It's called the Morgantown Community Partnership Meeting for Built for Zero. It's a community partnership program about homelessness. And I was one of many people in the, in the community who showed up. And there are 90 communities throughout the country working to solve homelessness, one population at a time. And Rachel Cohen ran an exceptional program from the West Virginia Coalition in homelessness. And they sponsored the program. There's funding here from the federal government. And the goal would be in three years to have zero, as they call it, zero homelessness. And what we discussed was a number of issues that related to Mon County and the uniqueness of our problems, and that a lot of times people see people downtown, think they're homeless, and they're really not homeless. They just go there because that's where, you know, everyone meets. But it was a good program. We'll be meeting again back in September. Also, I was excited. Yesterday, I received a letter from the President of NACO, National Association of Counties, Denise Winfrey. And she has appointed me again on the Healthy Counties Advisory Board for NACO, and I'm very excited to be a part of that program. And finally, on Saturday, we have the Back to School Bash. We're expecting now close, we already have 950 students registered, and we're looking close to 2,000 students. And it turns out to be about $165 per student of all the supplies, backpack, personal hygiene items, and everything else you would ever want to go to school. And the key being that the student goes there, picks up his own shopping materials for school, and then has ownership because he is, he or she has done it. So we're very excited about that. It's at the Mon County Center, which the building is just perfect for that. And I, I want to thank the county commissioners for allowing us to have it there. Any other discussion?
Move to adjourn second.
Move to adjourn second. Approved, we be gone. Thank you.